You know, and we're not live yet, are we? I'll ask you later. I just want to know, how many of these have you done in your career? This would be, it's a fascinating kind of question.
A lot.
A lot. I know the answer would be a lot. I just thought maybe you'd actually ticking them off on the wall.
I'll have to do that, yeah.
Kind of, you know, you could go back and look through the agendas.
That's right.
Just curious. Okay. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Study Session for February 24th, 2025, here at 6:00 PM, Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. Mr. City Manager, do you want to fire us up on the first one here? It's the Animal Cruelty Task Force. Kind of give an overview, or just, shall we?
I think I'm going to defer to Councilmember Wiley for this one, sir.
Very good. Councilmember Wiley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and my colleagues. It's very strange being on the side of things. So I am coming to you tonight to give my proposal for the Independence Animal Cruelty Task Force. And the first thing I want to do is introduce Cody Atkinson. And he is with the organization formerly known as the Humane Society of the United States. It is now called the Humane World for Animals. So my proposal deck is a week old, so it has not been updated to the new fabulous name. So I think a lot of you know that for the last five years, on Sundays, I spend my mornings in the clinic and hospital at KC Pet Project. And I have been a volunteer for five years. It's a passion of mine. I have always loved animals. I especially like working with the animals that have had surgery, need surgery, come in injured. We get a lot of cruelty cases. We get a lot of neglect cases. And in '23, I met Cody Atkinson. And when I ran for council, was in touch with him about these kind of issues. And this summer, we met for coffee, and we were talking about how we have seen an uptick in neglect cases and cruelty cases. We were talking a lot about the current animal crisis. I know you have all heard me talk about this. The shelters are full. Rescues are having a really hard time moving dogs. And a lot of this was born of the eviction crisis. And we have talked a lot about how we noticed that people are surrendering dogs when they don't want to. And it's because they have no choice. So what can we do about the cruelty neglect cases in our area, specifically in Independence? And Cody came to me with this idea of a task force, where, as you can see from the mission, we are going to unite our Independence Police Department with our animal control officers to collaborate and successfully investigate and prosecute animal cruelty, educate the community that we serve in, which is really important. So, okay, so we've all anecdotally noticed these cruelty cases going up, these neglect cases going up. So this task force will be a link for many groups in our community to work on this. So the goals of the task force. First, we'll create a well-trained response team to handle large-scale cases such as hoarding, neglect, and abuse. We haven't had a great deal of these in Independence, but they've had a lot of them in Kansas City. And we're going to work on that. We'll be ready for that. Next, we will foster a stronger working relationship between various agencies by providing joint training sessions. A collaborative approach between animal control officers and law enforcement will enhance communication and streamline efforts to protect animals in distress. Another crucial step is the development of uniform standards of care for animals in our city through ordinances. And I will say that Councilmember Fears started that process before I was elected. And we have met recently to work on our ordinances on cruelty and neglect. And that is going to be presented at the end of March. We're going to continue to work with our animal control officers, sit down with them, have conversations with them about their challenges and, you know, what will help them going forward. Additionally, implementing standardized operating protocols to improve reporting and investigation processes. This includes seamless information being shared between the Independence Police Department and our animal control officers. And then education is a cornerstone of this initiative. By educating residents and community partners about animal welfare standards and available resources, we can help prevent cases of neglect before they occur. And lastly, data collection and analysis will play a significant role in this work. By tracking trends in animal cruelty and neglect and examining links to domestic violence and child abuse cases, we hope to gain deeper insights that will enhance these preventative So there is some legislation that is coming down the pike with Senator McCrary, SB 65. And so this would require animal control officers to be mandated reporters. If they're on a call where an animal is being neglected or abused, statistically, the family members in that household are at a high risk for being abused themselves. We know that animal abuse and cruelty is both a predictor and indicator of family So since this is happening, we're going to be one step ahead of it, because we're going to create this task force, and we're going to give our animal control officers mandated reporting training. So here we have some statistics on the link between animal abuse and family violence. A survey of pet-only families with substantiated child abuse and neglect found that animals were abused in 88% of cases. 75% of abused women who have companion animals report a history of their companion animal being threatened or intentionally harmed by their abuser, with children being present and witnessing the violence over 90% of the time. So in my talks with some of our community partners, I was able to sit down with Hope House. And they have, they are a wealth of information about this. This is a way that abusers keep the family in the house. Unfortunately, the abuser often exploits the bond that women and children in the house have with animals. And they use this to manipulate, and they use this to keep them in the house. Cruelty to the animal may be used to convince the victim to return to a violent relationship, keep the victim isolated, financially control the victim, or coerce the victim into staying. Also, the last point, and this is really important. On January 1st, the Bureau's National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIBRS, began collecting detailed data from participating law enforcement agencies on acts of animal cruelty, including gross neglect, torture, organized abuse. So before that, crimes against animals were sort of lumped into all other offenses in the FBI's Uniform Crime Reporting System. So the FBI has seen how important this is, that it needs to be singled out and tracked. And so we all know, I think, if you could ask any law enforcement, anyone in law enforcement, anyone in animal control, they can tell you this stuff because they've seen it. And then I wanted to show this really important quote. "Animal cruelty crimes uncover other crimes: family violence, juvenile delinquency, drugs, and human trafficking, and more." So when, so Cody was able to introduce me to a lot of people in the state of Missouri who are also working on this really important issue. And he introduced me to the Missouri Alliance for Animal Legislation. And they have, they have sort of worked on this CANA coalition, the Child and Animal Neglect and Abuse Coalition. This coalition meets once a month. It's a Zoom call. I've been lucky enough to be on one of the calls. And this coalition brings together professional advocates from both the animal and child welfare system. And they work together to tackle this issue. So the first, these monthly meetings, I would really like to see, you know, a representative from IPD, a representative from animal control, and I think I'll always be a part of this. So the first 30 minutes is some kind of training. Sometimes it's domestic violence training, sometimes it's child abuse training, sometime it's animal cruelty training. And then they do something really interesting, which is case consultation. And they have so many examples of where, just talking about some things that were going on in the area, they were able to come together to solve a specific solution with a specific case. So I'm really excited to get some representatives from Independence on this coalition, and hopefully we can do that next month. And then a list of participating members and agencies. So this list represents our community working together to stop violence as soon as it happens, working together to solve issues right away. So Independence Police Department, Independence Animal Control, the Jackson County Prosecutor, who I was also able to meet by meeting the Missouri Alliance and talking to them. And I was able to sit down with Claire Wyatt, who's the Jackson County Prosecutor, who sort of focuses on animal cruelty and neglect, had a really good conversation with her. Of course, the Humane Society of the United States, which is now the Humane World for Animals. I had a great conversation with Hope House. We're hoping that we can get some of their staff into some of these Jackson County Prosecutor trainings. And then Wayside Waves, which is a really great organization in Kansas City, who gives free humane education. And I'm hoping that our shelter can be kind of the hub for that, where we can have classes where the focus is how to take care of your animal. So that's going to be a really important part of this task force. And then the next slide is training options for our police department. And the best part of this is they're free. The Humane Society, it will come to our city and spend the weekend and train our officers. So we're going to work on a list of officers. We're hoping to do two per shift. And our animal control officers will be a part of this training. Continuing education is always important. And when I spoke to the animal control officers, they were excited about the education part of this, and the, you know, the more education they get is better. The first class will be this overarching animal cruelty and animal fighting investigations. I think we're hoping to do this in May. And the Humane Society that we spoke to, we're going to invite as many of our officers here. They're also going to open it up to other cities in our area, so that we can get, we can get as many people trained as we can. Additionally, Claire Wyatt from the Jackson County Prosecutor's Office, she gives these training along with CANA. And actually, tomorrow, she's giving a training to KC PD detectives and sex crime detectives. They've also invited some of Jackson County. I'm not sure if any of our officers are going, but she's having this training again in March. The presentation is about the link with animal abuse, domestic violence, child abuse, and other special victim abuse. Our prosecutor is working to encourage law enforcement to work the animal cruelty angle on those types of cases. They are discussing the advantages that give, that gives the prosecutors legally to hold And then the last slide is training options for animal control officers. Most of these trainings are led by the Missouri Alliance for Animal Legislation. They have free training for animal control officers, as you see here. I also understand the mandating reporter training is an online class that can be taken for animal control officers, which I believe, I believe most of them have taken. And then again, community education, really hoping to get Wayside Waves here and do some education programs on animal cruelty and neglect for both adults and children. And then my dream goal would be to have periodical assemblies at our schools in Independence that goes over humane education for kids. And then, lastly, I just want to, I know that one of the things the community has been concerned about, and I hear concerns about, is dog bites, dog attacks. And there was a really serious one in Kansas City. We had a really terrible one last fall. And so what I'll say about that is, there's a few things that all of those serious attacks have in common. Almost always, the dog is intact, which means it's not spayed or neutered. The dogs are almost never properly socialized, like dogs that are tethered outside for 23 hours a day. They don't have human interaction. And so this is also a public safety issue. If we can educate the people of our community on best practices for their animals, maybe we can cut down on stuff like that. This issue is really not an issue that only animal control has to tackle, right? It's just too big. And so this is really a way for a lot of different people to come together to work on the issue. So, thank you. I'm really excited about this. I think it's really good. I will add also, the Missouri Alliance mentioned to me that we would be the only city in Missouri to have our own animal cruelty task force. So this is, this is a big deal.
Very good. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Please proceed.
First, I can tell how much work you've put in on this, and I appreciate sort of your thoughtfulness in looking across departments. So if I was going to distill this down, it would be that this is a way for coordination between our police force and our animal control officers. It's to raise awareness in the community. But the piece that, for me, is the most, I think, important is the hotlining. So I'm a physician, so I'm a mandated reporter, as are all healthcare workers. All teachers are mandated reporters, meaning that if we suspect abuse of a child, we are obligated by law to make that report. So I'm just curious, is it, is it your intent that if the animal control officer is there to take a dog, and they see what they consider to be neglect or abuse, they report it? Or when they take a dog who's been abused, they automatically report that as a risk factor for abuse and neglect?
I think both. I mean, one of the things we're still working on with this is how IPD is going to talk to the animal control officers. And that's a sort of a software reporting issue. And I think we're close to solving that, but we're not quite there. So, you know, if IPD goes to a house at 3:00 in the morning for something else and has learned about animal cruelty and sees a dog and knows this dog is being abused or neglected, then they have a way to immediately report that, so that animal control is flagged and we'll see it in the morning. And vice versa, I think. I mean, our animal control officers are in houses, too. And so I think it's both.
So I'll be really curious, being at risk for abuse is a tough way to hotline?
Right.
As opposed to, obviously, if they see abuse or neglect of kids, that, I think that is an immediate hotline call. And the thing is that the investigators are trained to go in and say, yes, no, maybe, watch. You know, they have all of those options. But animal abuse was one of my biggest indicators when I was in an exam room with a woman, and I thought that she was at risk of being killed by her intimate partner. If there was cruelty to the animal, then I worked to get her out of the house within the next 24 hours. So I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. And, you know, I haven't been to the training. I haven't seen the training. I mean, the officers and the animal control officers are going to get this animal cruelty training. So I think some of those things are going to be answered once the Humane Society gets here and talks to us. And this might, this might be phased, right? We might find that this works really well, and we have a phase two where we have a hotline. I mean, there's a lot of things that could be done with this. But I think just getting this off the ground and just talking about animal cruelty in a public space with more than just animal control officers is going to be really powerful. And that's, that's a great start, just talking about it.
Very good. Anyone else have other questions?
Thank you for all the work you've done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other further questions? No, I know you've worked on this a very, very long time, and we appreciate your efforts and work. And I know you've talked to all the parties, and you've talked with IPD, all of the folks to get that up and running. And that's so important when you're doing anything like this, is, I call it kumbaya efforts. You've worked with everybody. Everybody's kumbaya now, and that's easy to do. So, well done.
Thank you. And I've had a lot of help. The Missouri Alliance for Animal Legislation has been great. Cody has been great. Claire Wyatt has been great. And my colleagues and Mayor, you guys have been super supportive. So, thank you. I'm excited about this.
Well done. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. City Manager, next on the agenda is IRIS update. So how do we proceed there?
Well, Mayor, you and the council will recall, last October, voted on a contract for services for the city's public transit system. And while many of those services remain the same, there was significant change to our fixed route system, which was replaced by the on-demand system known as IRIS. So the council's expectation was that we would have regular reporting back to you about how that was going. So tonight, we're here to do a check-in with you about that, and I'm going to ask Tom Scannell to come kick this off for us.
Very good. I'm going to move this down. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Scannell. I'm the Community Development Director. And tonight with me, I have Terry O'Toole. He is with WHC, which is the company that operates IRIS here in Independence. So I will turn it over to Terry to start the presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, council, for letting me speak for a second. A little background on myself, I've worked for WHCZ trip for 25 years. I also currently am on the Prairie Village City Council, so I've sat on your side. And I've done a presentation that I sort of like. It's brief, because I just try to get the points out there, but then we'll stand for any questions that you have. And hopefully, we get all the questions answered between the presentation and any questions that you might have. Real quick, just an overview. As we talked about, we had a launch date of January 2nd, 2025, and service hours Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The fleet that we currently contract with is five vehicles, four of them being ambulatory, one of them being wheelchair. We have booking methods where riders can book via the IRIS app on their cell phones, through a web portal, or a live call. We have a call center that's available 24/7, that people can schedule their trips on there. And we found out, in the microtransit world, there are people who do not have access or do not use cell phones and apps and things like that. So that works out very well for them. The fare set by the city is $5 a trip. That money comes back to the city to offset some of the expenses that we charge to have vehicles out there for those hours. And payment methods, again, cash, credit, and debit, and you can pay through the app. One more thing, cash is important in this type of thing. In the microtransit world, there are people who are unbanked, and so we always have an option for cash payment in the car, and that has worked well. We do this same type of IRIS system in multiple cities. We do it in North Kansas City, we do it in Liberty, Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas City, Missouri. And it is also going basically, you know, coast-to-coast, border-to-border in other municipalities. We do it in other municipalities ourselves, in other states and other cities, and there's also competitors that do it. It's just a new way to sort of mitigate cost on fixed route, public transit, and give other options for your residents. Moving on, this, of course, as you see, we had to have this turned in a little early. So this is going to show January 6th to February 5th, so it could get on the agenda. So in that time, we had 2,000 trips and 221 unique riders during that period. You'll also see that the ridership on a trend line is increasing. And that was through, as we all know, basically the worst winter, the worst two-months winter in the last 30 years. So you'll see some bouncing through that. There's some snow days in there. There's some days that didn't have the same demand. But as we've done this across multiple cities, as I've told you, we see the trend line do nothing but go up. As people get used to it, they understand it, they sort of grow into it, and like the fact that, one of the things we'll get into more a little bit later, is that there's usually less walking with this to get to meet your vehicle. Passengers per vehicle hour, that's a metric that everybody tracks. The current average for the city of Independence is 2.22 passengers vehicle hour. Industry average is 1.5 to 2.5. So we're doing very well right out of the gate, and we expect that. Again, all these KPIs should tick up as we go. On-time performance, we're averaging 93% to pick somebody up on time. That's exactly where we, where we expect to be, where we see ourselves in other cities, where we see our competitors when they do it in other cities. I did investigate the January 7th dip, because we track this day-to-day. We knew what happened on January 27th. As you see, that's that drop that goes way down. We knew the next day what the problem was. That was the morning after the Bills-Chiefs game. And drivers didn't come out in the morning. They were tired, they'd watched the game, whatever it was. I will tell you, the Monday after the Super Bowl, we changed some things around. We had 93% on the Monday after the Super Bowl. So this is the type of real-time data that we can react to immediately when we see something. And next year, if the Chiefs are still there, we will have, we will not be caught off by a Sunday game like that. And I apologize for that. The pickup and drop-off locations, and this is important to this program, because if you go back to the second slide, I said the fare was $5. The city, we've worked with Tom, we've worked with the city. There are locations that any one of your residents can go to and basically transfer, and it becomes a free trip to them. Tom's going to get into the numbers of how many are free and that. But what I will tell you is that, for a point-to-point, anyone in your city can traverse this with no charge. And they have to go either to or from one of these, one of these points. If you notice, like, the Blue Ridge Transfer Point is located on 43rd Street. There's the Walmart and things like there, Independent Transit Center across the street, which people have been used to going to. So we've basically picked stuff with the use of the city to help us do that. Average ride rating, you can rate the ride on the app, right after the trip, during the trip, or later on, when you open it back up. Our average ride rating is 4.8 out of 5.0. We're pretty proud on this. So we think, so far, it's been a great startup. We hope you feel the same. And we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to the council direct in a case like this, and we would relish coming back in a couple months, or a month, or whatever you all would feel. And at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Tom, because we're going to get into some city stuff.
Thanks, Terry.
Questions?
So, yes, I wanted to cover...
Tom, hold on just one second. We do have a question.
I did. Could we go back to your slide before we move to the next presentation?
We sure can. And I should have said before I ducked off, after Tom, I will come back up, and we'll both handle questions. But let's go back to the one you want to look at.
One more? Yes. Can you explain this to me again?
Yes. So if you want to, if you want to travel without that $5 charge we talked about, you can go to any one of these, to or from any one of these locations. So what this does is, like, Independence, the Transit Center across the street, it gives everybody access to the free KC ATA bus into Kansas City. So... So anywhere in Independence, if you took IRIS to that location, for instance, you could get on the bus to Kansas City and go for free. If you absolutely did not, could not, would not afford the $5, you technically could take a trip from your house to one of these locations, from that location to another place inside Independence, and both those trips would be free. So if you have no charge for something, it's, you know, people will overuse the systems, sort of. But what this does is sort of, it's a way to mitigate demand, which you want to do in a system like this. Because the city has to pay for however many vehicles are out. Right now, that number's five. If you had no charge, no impediments to anybody going one or two blocks or anywhere within the city, the demand would shoot through the roof. But what the city also didn't want to do was have a situation where somebody can't afford to get to a location within the city. So did I do a good enough job of explaining what's going on there?
So the way I understood it, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that the idea was that IRIS would connect you to a different transfer spot. So they would take you here, so you could get on the 24 bus, or at Walmart where you could get the 28 bus. And that was the intent of making those front door to destination to connect to a different form of ridership, as opposed to making it hard enough people won't use the system.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And so the places that they can do that would be the old Blue Ridge Mall, the Blue Ridge Crossing, Center Point Medical Center, and the Walmart on 39th Street. Is that correct?
I'm going to let you.
So in working with WHC, so we outlined these three free transfer points. And like you mentioned, they were to make connections to other parts of the metro. So the Independence Transit Center, that has the 24 route, which takes you into downtown KC Mo. The Blue Ridge Transfer Point, which is where Walmart is located, that gets you connections to the 28 and two other routes that take you into KC Mo. So it's getting our residents to these two nearby transfer points to get them anywhere else in the metro. And then Center Point Hospital was chosen as a large employer.
Okay. I just see Walmart as one of his markers there. And so I'm just trying to understand, is that also Blue Ridge Crossing Walmart? Or which Walmart is that?
The Walmart that's listed in that graph is the Walmart down on 39th Street. And this is just to show kind of the top four most popular destinations.
Okay. So it wasn't that they could go there. Thank you. That was the clarity I needed. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay.
Sorry, I've got one more. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. On your performance matrix slide with the average of 93% on-time pickup. So if I call and one picked up at 1:15 p.m., are you there at 1:15 p.m.? Do you have like a grace period of five, six minutes up or down from that? What's your category for on-time?
Fifteen on either side. Fifteen on either side. Pete, Pete's with the KC ATA. Fifteen minutes from the time you want to get picked up is the window that you would consider on-time. I got that mixed up with the pair of transit. Sorry about that.
Right on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Please proceed.
Well, since you're standing there, I'll ask this last one. We had a number of people who came and talked to us earlier. One of their concerns was that the cars weren't marked, and they had a hard time figuring out, was that the car they were supposed to get into or not? And they didn't feel safe approaching the car. So I just wondered if you could speak to that.
Yes. I watched that council meeting last time, and we went back and double-checked. And there was one car that didn't have an IR sticker on it at all there. So we corrected that one, and we're on the lookout for it. I don't think that will be an issue, and I don't think it was quite as big as it felt. But I watched it and immediately went back and looked into that.
Anyone else? Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I wanted to give you a little bit of update. So as Terry mentioned, IRIS went live just after the first of the year. On that first day, we realized something that we needed to make a change to. Alpha Point is a service that provides employment and other resources to those who are visually impaired. They are located in KC Mo. We had a handful of employees who are Independence residents, and we needed to make a quick change. Terry and his team reacted that day and was able to put in place a solution that solved the issue for those, about 10 employees. Those employees are picked up at their house and taken directly to Alpha Point for work only. That is paid entirely by the city. So that is something that we bear the cost from. And that was something that Terry and his team quickly identified on the very first day. Oval Springs Apartment, this is another example. This is a individual reached out to the city saying, hey, I'm trying to use the service, but I'm unable to schedule a trip. This is where I live. Oval Spring Apartments is located on the 291 Outer Road, just south of Gudgel. And looking at that and reaching out to Terry and his staff, they were in, just over an hour, able to add some additional stops for the Oval Spring Apartments, so that they were able to use that. As Terry mentioned, you know, we have the three free hubs where there's no fare paid. To date, almost 52% of our trips are free. So as Terry had mentioned, people are getting used to the system. They're learning how to ride the, how to ride the system and how to ride it within their budget. That is how we design this. The number of stops, the fixed route only had 245 stops, and those were located along major roadways. IRIS covers the entire city and has over 750 and growing virtual stops. In fact, I think last week, we had another rider who was trying to get into, down in the Eastland area, down by Costco, and they were able to add additional stops to serve that area. The average walking distance, whether they're getting picked up or getting dropped off, is about 518 feet. That's walking distance. If you go to Walmart, you're walking a lot more than 518 feet. Even if you park at Walmart, you're probably walking at least half that just to get to the front door. As mentioned before, IRIS, the flexibility of service, it's on your time versus the schedule that the buses run, and IRIS covers the entire city. So why did we pivot from fixed route to IRIS? Simply comes down to the cost. We were looking now for fiscal year '25, '26, additional $3.3 million just to cover the ADA pair transit, 24 route, and the fixed route. And that fixed route that was going to be provided was a service that was 60% less than what we were providing in 2024. So what that means is, in 2024, the fixed route that was operated by First Transit operated just under 16,000 hours. The service that we were looking to, that we thought was going to fit within our budget was just under 6,800 hours. The yellow and orange routes, which serve the northern third of Independence, those were eliminated. Saturday service was eliminated. So it really wasn't a very high-quality fixed route service. So we put together an estimate that what would it take to continue the same level of service, that is, the 16,000 hours a year that First Transit used to provide? That was over a $4.4 million increase for fiscal year '25 and '26, which jumps to over $6.6 million by '29 and '30. So significant cost increases. But we are not alone in seeing those costs increase. Looking at some of our peer communities, four since 2023 have eliminated fixed route. The first one was Gladstone. They had a fixed route that connected them to KC Mo. 2023, due to rising costs, they eliminated that service. And they didn't provide anything back. Grandview, Blue Springs, and Raytown were the next three in 2024 to end fixed route service. If you look at that table that I've included in this slide, we provide fixed route. We have the 24 route that connects us into KC Mo. We provide ADA and non-ADA pair transit within the city, as well as ADA pair transit to get us into KC Mo. And we also provide IRIS. Lee Summit is the only one that has this micro transit, which is more of a flex route that operates on very limited hours. But going through this a little bit, Liberty, again, they do provide a very limited ADA pair transit. It only operates Monday through Friday on limited hours. And it's funded with a state grant. As mentioned, Lee Summit operates that flex route. Again, it's only operating Monday through Friday, and that has a cost associated with that of $3 per trip. Gladstone was able, even though they stopped their fixed route, they were able to still provide IRIS that has a fare of $3. Blue Springs, when they, after they cut their fixed route, they do have Oats, which provides service at limited hours and limited days. And depending on where you are going and the day of the week, it's either free or it's $3 per trip cost. A number of the comments that we received were from the disabled. They were using the fixed route. And IRIS is an option for that, but Ride KC Freedom, which is our ADA pair transit, is a better option. Number of those calls that we received and we told them about the Ride KC Freedom as an option, they didn't know that. But we connected them with KC ATA to get them certified and to start using the system. As mentioned before, the ADA pair transit that we provide still covers the entire city. The fare, it's $3 per trip. It is a free fare if you are within 3/4 of a mile of a fixed route. So that is along the 24 route. And then down within 3/4 of a mile of the Blue Ridge Transfer Hub, there are also free rides down there. We still have the ADA that gets riders into KC Mo. So going forward, we're going to continue to gather data on riders' travel patterns. Where are they going? Where are they being picked up? What day of the week are they riding? What time of day are they riding? And continue to look at the on-time performance. We use this data to continue to make adjustments to better serve what our residents need. We have, our current IRIS contract expires June 30th, which is the end of our fiscal year. And our intention is to have another presentation to the city council, probably in May, just before the time when we bring forward another contract. So that concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions.
Please proceed.
I just want to make one clarification. Alpha Point is a special case because Alpha Point is a place for business for people who are severely visually impaired. So there were extra burdens on that. So that was one of the reasons that I deeply appreciated you making the modifications to get them to work. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Anyone else have other questions?
Mr. Mayor. So you mentioned that the rider may have to walk to meet the vehicle, or they may not be able to pick up at their actual stop. What would be a reason for that?
So if you think back, so the fixed route with the 245 stops, a person who was using the fixed route was probably walking anywhere from 1,000 feet to a quarter mile or more just to get to a stop. We have, or IRIS has been able to reduce the amount of distance that they have to walk. And as we've kind of mentioned before, that if a rider has a stop that is near to where they are going, we can take that information, get that to Terry and his group to take a look at that and see if we need to move a stop or add a stop there.
Okay. One more question. Has there been any incidents or any times where a rider has requested a ride, and it was scheduled, and then for some reason, the ride didn't happen? Just like a driver didn't show up?
I'm going to go back to your first question. I'll come back to that. Another reason that we have the stops, that we walk to the stops, it makes the system way more efficient. If you think about it, in pair transit systems and such, if you're picked up at your front door, what happens is the car gets there, you go put on your coat, you get your purse, everything. It takes almost five minutes on average to get into a vehicle at that point. So the passenger per vehicle hour goes down significantly because of that delay. So that is also something else that works into the system by having someone basically at a virtual bus stop. They're ready to go, get in the car, and move on. So I thought that I'd just add that as an operational component to the answer that Tom was able to give you. So it's 93% on-time. We go back to that. Has any trip ever not gotten picked up? I don't have that in front of me. I'm going to tell you, as long as I've been doing this business, the answer to that question is yes. I would have to go back and find out exactly. And I don't mind doing that for you, you know. But it is a rare occurrence. Trips will get canceled because people change their mind and stuff like that. And sometimes that skews the numbers because there's really not a reason that we know why they got canceled. So for the most part, we're very reactive to, if there is an issue, someone reports it to us, we drill down immediately to sort of what went wrong on that one. We're in constant contact with your resident to find out what it is. So when it does happen, we react to it and handle it. So, good question. I'm not going to dodge the answer and say, I don't know, and it probably didn't happen. I'm sure the answer to that question is yes.
Okay. Well, I would like to see some hard numbers on how many times it's happened since the program started. And so, okay, thank you.
Understood.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, just want to clarify your question, so I understand it. You're asking the question, how many rides throughout the entire timeframe have been canceled?
Well.
Either by the, missed by the IRIS or missed by?
I would say missed by IRIS. I'm not really concerned if the rider canceled the ride.
Okay.
So.
Very good. I just wanted to clarify, so I understood. Thank you. Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much a question, as more of a comment and observation. As we're looking at the peer community comparison. As we're looking at the peer community comparison, as we're really looking as a council, trying to be sensitive to all of our constituents and working with all the needs that are here, and also with the budget constraints, looking at that peer community comparison, we are certainly striving, and I would say, doing much better. And it's a policy decision that we have made here, working with the city manager. And thank you, Mr. Schenell, for all the work you put into this, too, to try to provide the services to our community at the highest level that we possibly can. So I just want to be, just make that known, that we are doing as much as possible, and I would, as looking at this comparison, we are doing way better than most of our other peer communities. So a big thank you to the council for being sensitive to this issue, and to you, Mr. City Manager, and Mr. Schenell.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just a comment. I think we have to keep communicating these kinds of things to our riders, and I think we may have to be creative on how we continue to do that. Because I think some of the issues that we had initially was just communication and education on what this change meant. So I'm going to ask that we continue to get this information out, educate riders, especially on how they can use this system for free, because it looks like if you, it can be used less expensive way. So that's going to be my ask, is that we continue to get this information out and educate our riders. Thanks.
Anyone else have other further questions?
I just have, I might have missed it, but what were the hours of the Independence operating, operating hours for Independence?
Ours operates on Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
So you have five drivers? Five cars?
Five cars during those hours, yes.
And what do you do if everybody wants to get to work at 7:30 in the morning?
Well, I mean, you could overload the system. And if so, if there's not, if there's not capacity at that time, they will get a message, but it will offer like at a different time. I mean, if, and honestly, we're not seeing that very often as it stands right now. As more people get used to using the system, that might be something, you know, Tom and I are talking about that continually. We watch that stat to see if there's trips that aren't serviced for that reason. And right now, it's not an issue. By the time we come back in May, it could be an issue. And then at that point, there's two ways to deal with that. There's through supply and demand. We either, you know, work with Tom and work with you all and say, "Okay, let's put some more vehicles on the road," or we find a way to decrease demand, and that's sort of economic type thing. Were you going to add something?
Yeah, so one of the things that Terry and I and KC ATA talk about on a fairly regular basis is we get to look at, to see, demand during the day, when's, what's the peak? And when is, when is it, when are very few riders riding the system? And what we've seen is about mid-afternoon, about 3:00 PM in the afternoon, that's our peak time. Then it's followed by the lunch hour, 1:00. Early in the morning, those tend to be lighter, as far as demand goes. But in talking with them, that gives us data where we may be able to shift certain things around. Maybe early in the morning, we have less riders, and we put more drivers in the busy time. So it's good to have data so we can analyze that and adjust as we need to, again, provide as much service as we can.
And this question is perhaps for the city manager. One of the concerns we had early on, when people came and spoke to us, were IRIS drivers who talked about conditions, you know, being able to take a break, being able to use the bathroom, the costs of participating in the IRIS program. And so do we have any mechanism for them to be able to give us feedback on how that is going before we, because we'll have to talk about a contract again?
I would need to defer to Mr. O'Toole for that, Councilwoman. Our contract is with the WHC, and we're really looking at it from the rider standpoint of, are our riders getting the service that they need and expect? I'll have to ask Mr. O'Toole to speak to the driver perspective.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And the answer to your question would be that, yes, I could work with Tom and the city manager and sort of go over what the drivers make, how that all works out, and I'm happy to do that. And again, I think if nothing else, I hope you're getting the feeling that it is 2025. This is not, this is not different than a lot of things. We have a lot of information. We have information on revenue, we have information on ridership, we have information on the time of demand. And the thing is that drivers, to stop and go to the bathroom or to stop, all they, there's a off system on their tablet. So without getting into very big details, I want you to be assured that I can sit behind the door and show these guys whatever they want. And if that's something, you know, that you want as part of a future presentation, you know, within being able, you know, I can't talk about an individual, but I can talk about overviews of, you know, what they do. For the most part, I mean, for the most part, we don't have trouble with drivers wanting to do this work. And the Independence routes are actually preferred routes because it's more of a defined area. In Kansas City, Missouri, they can go basically from Martin City to Liberty, and they're, they've got longer runners. The drivers who are working in Independence, they've got shorter routes, they've got a smaller, more, they get used to knowing their clients. It's amazing. If you're driving, you know, 40, 45 hours a week in a city like Independence, and the riders are similar, day in, day out, week in, week out, you know, they might not have the same rider, same driver every day, but over the course of a week, they've got that driver three or four times. They become friends, they become confidants, they, it's actually pretty positive. And I like watching that dynamic in the business that we're in. It happens very much in the pair transit world. Some of these people basically ride for socialization with these drivers. So they're professionals, they enjoy what they're doing. Did that get you?
Yes, and thank you. And it was people talking about making those very long trips who complained about that. So that clarification comforts me. It's just that we have to be sure that we're honorable in the way that we treat the people who work in our city as well. So thank you for being attentive to that.
Understood.
Thank you. Anyone else have other questions? So if I can ask you, Mr. O'Toole, you're on the City Council right now, Prairie Village, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you guys use IRIS?
Prairie Village does not use IRIS. It is, you know, 6.2 square miles. It's never had public trans, it has the KC ATA bus that goes across 75th Street, and it has one that goes down, and I should know the numbers like you all do, I don't. And it has one that goes down Noll to the Mission Center sort of transfer point. But it probably would be an option for them, but I don't know if you've been following, Prairie Village has got enough things open in the hopper that I don't think we need to go down that route.
Add that one, yeah. I'm just curious from a standpoint of, you know, obviously your professionalism, you understand the system very well and things like that. On the, the complaints that I've heard are, if they're not there at the location within a minute either way that you leave, is that true?
That's absolutely true. So that's the way the system is set up to get in, to get in there. Now, we are working with the software provider to have a little latitude built into that because actually I think it's too draconian the way it is right now, because the minute it flips a minute, if the person's not in the car, it gives them another trip and moves them on. So, but for the reason given, I don't want to leave the impression that it's, that when I come back next time, I'm going to, you're going to say, "Well, wait, I'm here, and people can wait two minutes now." It is set up to go, and I sort of, I should have known that answer off the top of my head. I do, of course. It's set up like a fixed route bus system. If you are not at the bus stop when the bus comes by, you missed the bus. And that's, and so when the answer goes back to, it's, you know, be here on time, plus 15 minutes, the trip is considered on time. There is no front end to that. So to keep the thing moving and being most efficient it can be, you really have to have that rule. That said, I'm trying to get that changed, and I think I will. It's a programming change. It turned into a little more of a programming change than I imagined, because what I don't like to see or hear or know is that they get reassigned a trip, and all of a sudden, they can see in the rearview mirror someone coming up, that that's probably that person. I'd rather have that 15 seconds to see if that's who that is, so.
Yeah, because that's the complaint that I've had. The, and I'm glad you're working on it, so thank you for doing that. The, is it possible that we, as the City Council, could see all of the, all of the reviews that you've received? And then of, you've got several hundred trips, what's the percentage of people who do not even rate you at all?
Oh, I think, I would come back to you with that answer exactly. More people don't rate us than do rate us. Again, it's a, the clientele that ride...
Sure.
Is just a different sort of clientele. But if more people don't rate us, the other side of that is, in the world, usually people do find a way to complain if they need to complain. So the fact that over the, you know, that you're at 4.8 over the reports that we get, they also, they wouldn't be shy to send emails and such. It's really a very good service, and the scoring does show that, but more people don't rate us than do rate us, but we still watch it.
Yeah, just curious. And then, these are actually for probably Mr. Schenell or Mr. City Manager. If we can go back to Slide 19 out of the 60 in the deck, and it's why IRIS, why change the IRIS? And it was showing our total cost of the general fund at $3.3 million, and you may have given us to this in October, what the cost of the contract is, but how much is the cost of the contract now with this IRIS system compared to what we were spending? Because we were anticipating spending $3.3 million in '25, '26. How much was the expense in '24? And you may not know this off the top of your head, and you can do this later. And it's unfair of me to ask these questions, so this is much detail, without getting a hold of you earlier, and I just thought about it now. So if you don't have an answer to it, it's on me, okay? It's not on you. I'm not here to embarrass you or to make life difficult, but it came up, as I was thinking about it, is how much was, you know, roughly how much was this, the cost last year to it? I suspect it's probably pretty close to $3 million or so, and that might have been paid by ARPA funds. So I don't know if you know those two questions off the top of your head.
So I'll answer it this way.
Okay.
When we went out for bid, so our contract with First Transit, who is operating our fixed route, that ended December 31st of 2024. That was the end of that, that contract that was started back in 2017. So we had over seven years and a very favorable contract with First Transit. When we went out to bid, much like other communities were seeing, their costs ballooned. And for the 6,800-hour fixed route service that we were looking to provide, the cost of that alone in the first year was more than what we were paying on an annual basis in fiscal year '23, '24.
Okay. Very good. And probably if we can, Mr. City Manager, set up a time where we can sit and talk about that, I'd like to see the comparisons, the differences, because those are just questions that have come up now from my perspective. And then, and I know we're working on the pair transit service, because we, they can drive to Kansas City, and we had this meeting the other day, coming back, and you're working on that and getting a list of all the pair transit folks, because if we got those, then we can communicate with those folks and say, "Hey, these are options for us," and going from there, and then getting a, then getting a bid for what would it take to pay for the pair transit service?
Yes, we continue to have those conversations with KC ATA, and we'll be working towards that, some sort of resolution.
Okay. I really appreciate you looking at that. I appreciate your time on it, and I know you're working hard on this, and it's, trying to keep all the balls in the air is very difficult, so I appreciate what you're doing, and we'll get back to you on those other questions, so go from there. Anyone else have other questions? Okay. But thank you, gentlemen, I really appreciate it. Well done. Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager, we're going to talk about GeoBond. Question number one, if I'm correct.
Yes, sir. As we have been doing with our study sessions since the council adopted the three questions, we've been trying to give additional information about those questions. And tonight, in the rotation, is an update on the Justice Center portion of the question. And with that, I will ask Chief Dussman to come and kick this off.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. You've heard me, and the community has heard me give this presentation multiple times, so I thought it only fitting that instead of listening to me drone on again, I'm going to bring the real expert up here. She makes her way up here, I wanted to introduce her and thank her for the work. I tapped Deputy Chief Michelle Sumstead with this project some 14 months ago, and she has exceeded even my wildest expectations. They have met weekly, she has coordinated a team of now five different companies with their teams and our internal folks to bring this product before you and before our community, and that includes going out and giving multiple presentations to our community at large. I could not be more proud of the work that she has done and the team that has worked on this, and I'm excited for her to be able to present to you tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Deputy Chief Sumstead and let her give the presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. If I could get Steve to actually put the presentation up there, I can probably do it by memory, but, oh, there we go. Had to go forward. All right, as you guys all are very well aware, is that we have the GeoBond coming up, so we're going to give you a little bit of an update of where we're at with the Justice Center. Just as a quick reminder, question number one, and I will give you the exact verbiage for the community. Shall the City of Independence, Missouri, issue its general obligation bonds in the amount of $130 million for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, renovating, improving, and equipping public safety buildings, facilities, and grounds, including constructing, improving, and equipping a new Justice Center, demolishing existing law enforcement facilities, housing functions that will be moved to the new Justice Center, and preparing such sites for alternative uses, and acquiring, renovating, and equipping an animal control facility? I say that because I know one of the multitude of questions that we get is, how do we know that money is going to be spent on what this says, what question number one says? It is mandated by state, and it will be audited by the state auditor that these are the only things that can be spent with that bond money. So with that, I will move on to our building, our current building. As you can see, looking at this picture, that building doesn't look terrible. However, just like with a lot of things, you can't see what's under the cover until you go inside. So we are going to take a little bit of a trip down memory lane. I know a lot of you guys have already seen some of these pictures, but as you're all aware, well aware, this building was opened sometime between 1972 and 1974 for approximately 100 to 150 employees. Currently, we are over about 300 employees, counting civilians. Since then, there have been a multitude of renovations done within that building to try and gain a little bit of space, which, as, like I said, is we are almost double what capacity is in that building. So with that expansion, it's hoping to bring everything onto one site. Currently, the top picture is our current emergency communications center. And then our K-9 building used to be the old animal control building over off of about Truman and 291. And then a lot of people are probably aware of the Penniston Building, that used to be Penniston Construction on Truman Road just to the east of here. We've also got three different substations, currently the Inglewood Substation, the Independence Center, and Hawthorne Apartments. Part of the problem with having these buildings all spread out throughout the community is I have one of my majors, Major Mark Kelsey, who he is the major over most of the divisions that are not housed at the station. For him to have contact with the people that work for him, he has a lot of travel time throughout the week and throughout the day to be able to have meetings and... to be able to have meetings and be able to talk some, talk to some of the people in his unit. Some of the issues that we have with expansions is right now, our property and evidence vehicles, whether it's a hot vehicle used in a homicide, a fatality car crash, or anything like that, it currently has to be transported out to the K-9 facility. Our crime scene unit to process those have to drive out to the K-9 facility and use a very small, not really adapted for crime scene processing, uh, to be able to do all that processing. Obviously, I just talked about the coordination with the commanders. And with having buildings all throughout the city, it's hard to keep the HVAC systems, internet, and all that stuff up and running the way that it should be running. Again, all of these buildings that we're currently in are extremely old and have been used for other purposes throughout the, quite honestly, I've been here three decades, and I think a lot of those buildings I have seen in a multitude of different functions during that time. Talk a little bit about the need for space. Like I said, as we have grown substantially, um, here's going to be the first one. Property and evidence, as a lot of you I know have heard, is that, uh, there are several different, uh, crimes that we have to keep the property and evidence forever. One of those is homicides. Um, as you know, since 1972, we have at least one homicide a year, and we still have all that property from back in the 70s and potentially the 60s, even before this building was built. And we can never get rid of that. So every year, we continue to gather more property and evidence. Uh, there are times that, uh, child abuse cases or sex crimes, those also potentially have to be held on forever. So as you can see in this picture, we are definitely running out of space in our crime scene, our property and evidence section. And this is just one of the areas. We have, I think, two or three different areas where we are currently holding those, holding those things. Also, within that, as everybody is aware, the public is aware is that we have leakage issues. And you'll see on a couple of places where, if you look on the top of this picture, uh, there's paper bags that are on top of some of those shelving units. If we have leakage on that, that leaks potentially into those paper bags that are holding evidence for different crimes. Equipment, maintenance, and storage. Every time we get a new police car, we have to obviously take out the backseats to put in the prisoner compartments and everything else. This top picture is our current storage unit because as we surplus out cars, those seats have to be put back into those cars. Anything that we've taken out for the private sector has to go back in after we surplus it. Um, the bottom picture is our, uh, Fleet Tech work area. And that's kind of where they're at, and they have all their property, uh, equipment is all stored in there. Believe it or not, there is a method to his madness, and he knows where everything is at in that garage and in their office. I don't know how he does it, but as you can see, we have tires in there to replace tires. Um, and then we try and squeeze two cars in there every chance we get to be able to, the car that it looks like is in there now is probably wrecked, so they're, uh, they actually do all the equipment takeout and switching that into other cars after they get done. This one was requested to be put in here, so here, here it is. Uh, currently, our bikes that are recovered throughout the year are currently stored on the roof because we do not have room for it in, or in the property and evidence area in the Sallyport, in the back lot, or anything else. Um, we actually are working on making sure that we have enough air, space for bicycles. Um, but these are bikes that were either recovered, found, lost, um, or are property of a prisoner. So we have to find somewhere to store those while they're in. Health and safety concerns, I'll go through each of these pictures individually. Um, here is, uh, one of the locker rooms. The right two pictures are, it's hard to tell on here, but those are both, uh, on the bottom of that, those are drip trays. So as you can see on both pictures, you can see some white substance, we'll say, coming off of those drip trays, and those are coming out of the rafters and the ventilation systems. Um, and we do what we can to try and mitigate where those are going to drip, so they will at least drip down the wall instead of dripping on people's heads or on property or on evidence. Um, the picture furthest to the left, I think I've got a better picture of it in here also, but that shows that there is some leakage uh, right next to the one of the, uh, light fixtures. And there that is again. So it's just a little bit more of the continual leaking problems. And part of that is, uh, probably about two and a half years ago, they replaced the entire roof at the police department because they thought that that's what the problem was, was the roof. Um, we are still having those issues, even with a two or three-year-old roof. And we still have those leakage issues. The building, we believe, was built on a natural spring, and apparently 50 years ago, they didn't have the, uh, technology that they have now, uh, to be able to site work all of that prior to building. So even with all the work we've tried to do, we still have those problems. And this is the picture of the workout room that I think has become somewhat famous. As you can see with this, this room usually gets painted about once a year. Um, and then it becomes looking like this within a couple, two or three months. As you can see at the bottom of those streaks, we also have a light switch. So we've got that going into the electrical areas. And this is the areas where, this is the area where our officers work out. This is also in that room. It's just showing some of the drainage, uh, coming from the ceiling area. Uh, this is one of the desks up in the administrative offices. What this is, is an undetermined, unknown substance uh, that is coming out of the ventilation systems. Yes, that substance has been tested, and it is still undetermined as to what that is. So, um, that, uh, major has new droppings when he comes into work pretty much every day. And so we have started a collection. And again, the property room, a couple more pictures of that. Those ceiling tiles that are missing on the top picture due to the, uh, humidity and the moisture that comes through that room, they're not able to keep any of the ceiling tiles up. So, um, though every time something new gets put up, it immediately falls down. So that's where we're at now, and that's kind of, they've got some drip trays up there as well. And those are those paper bags full of evidence. You can see the evidence tape around the top. And that's, again, right there by where the ventilation systems are and where they're potentially leaking, so. And moving into the detention area, this is the Sallyport. Due to storage needs, again, and the amount of prisoners we bring in uh, on a daily, weekly basis, uh, all that stuff on the left-hand side is prisoner property. And when they have larger property, a lot of times it has to be stored in the Sallyport until they get released from detention. If they get held in another facility, then a lot of times that stuff has to stick with us until they come back. Uh, the table on the right is a, uh, for lack of a better term, a processing area that when we bring a prisoner in, we have to empty out their pockets and get all of their property off of them. We have to do that right there in the Sallyport. So if there's another car waiting to come in, um, they have to wait until they get done processing those prisoners out in the Sallyport area. And obviously, with weather, it's not always a great circumstance in there, but we can only fit comfortably one car in that Sallyport at a time. This is also in the Sallyport. You can see more drainage, uh, through wiring and electric. Uh, this is in the back hallway, uh, basically where, I like the utility room within the detention area. Obviously, you can see that there's some, uh, rusting and some water damage back there as well. Some structural issues in that same area. Uh, this is showing on the bottom where we have, uh, some separation between the wall and the floor that have had to be caulked over the years. Um, this is just a friend that they found in detention when they went down to take pictures. Um, but those friends have been located, uh, multiple times throughout the years, whether it's the roaches, snakes, potentially mice and rats at times. So we have, uh, once in a while, we'll have to have an exterminator come out to take care of that. Um, these are the stairs on the far left going up to the administrative offices. These are concrete stairs. If you notice, in the middle of that far right picture, those are wood shims holding those stairs up into place because they had started coming down, and there are now wood shims to try and at least keep that somewhat level. Uh, the other pictures are just showing a little bit of drainage coming down the walls. I will talk more about that in a second. I'm just kind of going through health and safety throughout the building. This is some more areas where we have problems with leakage. Uh, you can see in that bottom picture, the bottom of that box is damp, and that's from some leakage. Um, we've also had to replace a bunch of tiles on that ceiling just because that is where every record that we have for a records unit, uh, case files and everything gets stored in that room. So that is a disaster, uh, whenever we have leakage in that room because that is all paper files. More storage needs, again, just, we, I mean, we have just literally grown, started growing out of that building. Um, this has been about, three months ago this happened on the second floor of the police building. Um, you can see there is a very substantial amount of water that goes into our conference room. That is from the men's bathroom. So, uh, that has been within about the last, I think it was three or four months ago. So we had to shut down all the water to the entire building. And this is not the first time things like this have happened. We have had just about every bathroom in the building has flooded at some point in time or another. We'll talk a little bit about parking challenges. As the department grows, obviously, we're going to have a lot more people parking. We have a lot more police cars, a lot more employees. So, uh, we try to hide, stash cars if we need to, um, you know, because we have cars that are wrecked, cars that are getting ready to be surplus. We have property and evidentiary vehicles. Sorry, it's a lot of mouthful. Evidentiary vehicles that we have to, again, if it was used in a homicide, we have to keep that forever. So we do what we can, uh, with the, with the properties that we have to hide those cars so the community doesn't have to look at them because they're not pretty, most of them. Um, so with that, uh, these are, this is, some of our parking constraints right now is, the bottom picture is our current back lot. Uh, but right now, that's where we also keep any of the cars that we're getting ready to surplus is in that back lot. So that takes away from some of our employee parking. Um, on the front row, or on the top picture, that is the City Hall parking lot. And we have a large, uh, contingent of employees that have to park over here in the unsecured City Hall parking lot. Uh, one of the big things that we've talked about throughout this is the new range, um, some training considerations. Right now, we have got a four-lane, uh, firing range over at the police department. The new range that we're hoping to get at some point in time will be 10, 10 lanes. We can only, with the staffing that we have and the, um, size of the function, or the size of the range that we have, we can only bring four officers in at a time to shoot. Some of our shifts, on average, are about 18 to 20 officers working during that shift. So to rotate through four at a time, that will take, usually, it's about an hour or two hours worth of training to try and get them through a shift, takes them off the street for that much longer. It takes that many more people off the street. Also, um, with some of the new training, uh, techniques and, you know, the onset of ambushes or different things throughout policing that have happened over the decades, is you have to change your training methods based on the things that are happening and the trends that are happening in law enforcement. Um, you know, if we were ever to be able to build this new funk, or this new, uh, range, it would be able to, we'd be able to pull cars in there to where we can do, uh, practice on ambushes, practice on different, uh, fighting from vehicles and things like that, so. So as I've talked about, and you guys have heard for, you know, like I said, about another, the last 14 to 16 months, we've obviously got a lot of issues. The biggest one to me, I've been here 30 years, the biggest one to me is the fact that we are just out of room. Um, the, I would love to hire more officers. I would love to do a lot of different things and have a lot of different programs for the community. And to be able to have a larger facility to bring, bring in more officers, to be more comfortable, and to bring in more things for the, for the community because right now, we just don't have, we don't have the space. So again, we're growing, but our space is not at this point. Um, you know, and obviously with the trends in training, um, we have to have the space to be able to conduct some of the newer trends in training. So with that, I will close up and take any questions, and so you guys can get out of here tonight.
Any questions?
Mayor.
Please proceed.
The new, um, Justice Center is really more like a campus. Am I, am I right? It's, it's, it's a series of, of, of buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So can you talk, talk about how much bigger it will be compared to the building you're in now? Square feet?
So the, it depends on which building you're talking about because currently, we are in several different buildings.
Okay.
So, and it also includes the municipal port, which will also move into that campus as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank you for your presentation, and I want to thank you for addressing the roof because I've had many questions about that. Why is it leaking? Didn't they just get a roof? So thank you for saying it was just a few years ago.
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Please proceed.
Thank you again. I've heard this a couple of times. And I learn something every time, so I appreciate that. Everybody who's come on a tour of the police department universally leaves with the impression that it is unconscionable that we ask our officers to work in these kinds of conditions. People shouldn't be working in closets. They shouldn't be tripled up in an office, and they certainly shouldn't be exposed to the kinds of things that they're exposed to. Do you have thoughts about this as a recruiting tool?
I do have a lot of thoughts regarding this when it comes to a recruiting tool. You know, we're one of the, one of the very few agencies that has not gotten a new police building or campus, um, in the Kansas City Metropolitan area. Do I feel like this could, um, could assist in that? As a matter of fact, I've got, just to get you guys into here a little bit. So these are kind of the what could be's. If me, as a new, potential new officer, walks into that building, I want to work there. You know, I don't have any say in any of that. But do I believe that a new officer would want to come and work in that building? Absolutely. You know, there is a lot of, lot of good that can happen there. I mean, that, right there, that's the community view. That's what any officer, new officer is going to see as they come into that building to, for us to recruit. Um, this is going to be, um, you know, a first of its kind in Independence if it happens. So like I said, with that, yes, I, I mean, I do have a lot of thoughts when it comes to recruiting, and I would love to recruit. I will recruit anybody that is qualified based on our qualifications to come here and work, so.
And, um, I know that we've talked about this before. You know, people are like, well, my house lasted 50 years, and I wouldn't just throw it away. Can you give me an idea about how this building gets used?
Yes, ma'am. That is a great question. So this building is open 24/7. Um, we have every, pretty much every division, uh, is open and has some assemblance there at least 10 hours a day, but patrol is there 24/7. There is somebody in that building utilizing that building, whether it's records, patrol, detention, um, they are all functioning all times of day, day and night. Um, your house, on average, is probably occupied eight to 10 hours a day. And it's not going through the extreme traffic, uh, the extreme chaos, I guess, for lack of a better term, that a police, police facility is going to use. I mean, there's people that are going to come, come and go from the front desk all day and all night. You know, so you've got your foot traffic. You've just got the general use that is happening all the time.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, Councilwoman, I would even take that a step further. If you're starting out with a small family and, and boom, you have five kids in a three-bedroom home, then there's some creativity stacking there with, with the kids.
That's a good comparison, Councilmember.
Thank you. So, um, I just want to make it real clear that, thank you, Deputy Chief, that, um, we are all available as a city council. And as a staff, we are out in the community, holding meetings. Um, there's nothing to hide here. Everything's on the table of how we want to develop and work through the general obligation bonds. Everything's on the table of how we want to develop and work through the general obligation bond. Specifically, we're talking about the proposed Justice Center tonight and the needs there. There are detailed plans, detailed discussions on what this would look like. And if there's any, anybody who would like to sign up and get in touch with us to come and talk with a community group, shoot, it doesn't even have to be a group of 10. It could be two or three neighbors. We're here to help discuss and go through any kind of concerns that anyone might have, not only on the Justice Center, but also the other two questions that we have available. So I'm excited to see how this progresses, and we've got a great future ahead of us.
I will go one further than that, Councilmember. And if anybody would like to come and get a tour of the police department, I am more than welcome to give those tours. And we have staff that's available to do those anytime they want. Sorry, Chief.
That's even better.
Okay, anyone else?
I may follow on to that. Could you give us a couple of scheduled times that people could come? Will you? I'm getting the high sign from Mr. Walker there. Because if you say, oh, just call me, I'll make a tour, I am never going to call you. I'm thinking about my mom. She's never going to put you out. But if you make an opportunity, you know, she'll bring cookies and show up with all of her neighbors. So I think that may be an opportunity. Thank you.
We will work on that and hopefully get something posted.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And then, we have, if I'm correct, some staff reports, boards and commissions, am I correct? Absolutely.
A recommendation has been made to appoint Haley Woods and Deputy Chief Michelle Sumstead to the Truman Memorial Scholarship Committee. A recommendation has been made to appoint Laura Garcia Siegfried to the Japanese Sister City Committee. A recommendation has been made to appoint Cindy Culp to the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals. Actually, that one's put on hold. Sorry. And a recommendation has been made to appoint Caleb Holder as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment. Staff request direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to those boards.
All right. And Mr. City Manager, anything to wrap up or follow up?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And if no one else has any other comments, we'll call this minute adjourned. Thank you.